You can shut it.
So.
A little chilly here, you know what I mean?
I feel like I'm not doing that well.
He's putting his hands in this.
Danny is outside. She's doing a little.
We only got two people watching.
She's doing a little mark with Danny outside, I sent her out there.
Where you start, how to do that?
This is crazy.
I know.
And she addresses the phone, yeah. To kick your head.
They have no glasses on, but yeah.
Going that way, then it's like, kind of, kind of. Working around it. But I need.
I'm getting there.
You're trying to have a problem, I mean, just like.
Bill.
I used to. Doesn't work out very well.
They're possibly over there. Or.
Yeah. I didn't tell them.
No, we need to wait for them.
The contacts had to get to the show, then they could be.
Yeah.
They could be, so I'm not on the.
Yeah.
I'm live. I'm live. I hear it.
Are you sure what he said he's doing this?
No, I don't think.
And.
I didn't.
I said, hey.
Something's taking.
Do what?
Just to confirm, we are live.
I gotta say, like, I'm trying to remember what you looked like. It seemed. You were sure. Our E-Char.
They just, I'm gonna have to do this, I'm just kidding.
Hi, how are you? She's making me.
Thank you. No, it's good. It's good.
All right.
I appreciate it a lot.
Hello, everyone.
We'll put up one number.
There.
Appreciate it.
So I gotta do this and.
Yeah, I think we're done already.
Yeah, this is both of them. That's no problem. All right. I call this regular meeting of City Council order and announce a quorum present. Uh, PZ Chair, can you please do the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I appreciate it. Uh, do we have any public comments?
Uh, none for this session.
Okay. Uh, let's see here. I now call the planning and zoning meeting to order and announce that a quorum is present uh, in City Council to enter into a joint meeting with the planning and zoning as well. And now we're getting ready to go into executive session. Uh, City Council will now convene to a joint executive session together with the planning and zoning commission pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one terms of government code in accordance with the authority contained in section five five one point zero seven one consultation with attorney in section one point zero five Texas disciplinary rules of personal conduct regarding pending litigation specifically civil action number one twenty CB one zero one seven Mayor Harvey Park LLC versus City of Manor and all pending in the United States District Court, Western District of Texas, Austin Division.
City Council will now reconvene in an open session pursuant to provisions of Chapter 551 Texas Government Code to take action on items discussed during closed executive session as necessary. There is nothing to discuss. Alright, and let's see here. Now I call the adjournment of the joint meeting with Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and the continuation of the regular meeting of City Council. And pursuant to, now going into executive session, provisions of Chapter 551 Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in Section 551.071 consultation with the attorney regarding subdivision B's.
And those of you in the planning commission.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
City Council will now reconvene into a session for children to the provisions of Chapter 551, case of different code and take action on items if any discussed during closed executive session. Uh, there is no decisions to be made. Moving on to reports, uh, about items of community interest in which no action will be taken. Uh, first report is dealing with the Youth Justice Action Month Report. Uh, received a email from a, uh, young gentleman that goes to us in Community College, asking if the city of Maynor would be, uh, willing to collaborate on Youth Justice Action Month. Uh, I think most of y'all should have a copy of this. And basically it kinda talks about, uh, how can Maynor celebrate this month regarding honoring storytelling and restorative justice in intergenerational exchange? Uh, this is something, uh, I think especially when we're talking about, uh, our youth. And not only just educating, but also hearing from them, uh, what the engagements have been, what the frustrations and needs are. Uh, I think this could be a great opportunity. We talked about this during the Public Safety Committee prior to the, the, the Joint City Council meeting. As something, uh, this committee could, could take on and, uh, for chiefs to also look into it as well as, as things that can potentially just be incorporated to help continue to bridge that relationship between law enforcement and, and our youth. Uh, understanding where some of their needs and some of the trends that are also resulting in maybe some of the unfortunate circumstances and outcomes that are happening. As we really strive to be more proactive in making sure our youth, uh, stay out of the, the prison system or stay out of or stay out of situations that could be hampering to their education and their success in the future. Talked about as far as doing digital storytelling, identifying potential events and projects that organizations could be able to do with the youth. Identifying things that the youth may be able to come together and try to build, like different types of programs and mechanisms. As we all know, we're looking more holistically as a council to build youth activities. Especially as we go into 2021, looking more at ways of bringing in or identifying revenue to be utilized for different types of programs and services. I think this would be a good way to listen and hear from the youth of what they want and what they would like to see, more so than what we believe they would want. And then also here talks about what are the current issues in the City of Maynor regarding youth engagement and justice? Again, I think this could be another good option for the Mayor's Community Collaborative as well as the Chiefs Citizens Group to further engage with the youth. As we all know, they don't really have anything. But wanted to present this to you all. I would like to see the City of Maynor participate in this. I would love for Chief and Councilman Harvey to take the lead on this. This is definitely something that Councilman Harvey is an advocate for and knowledgeable in the whole restorative practices and so forth. So I think it would be critical and key to have that knowledge and information and then to also kind of let us know how we plan in 2021 to make sure we're taking care of our youth. And then we're going to end up talking about another topic for a resolution later on with Cities United. This organization was founded by two mayors focused on youth under 24 in how to build systems and programs and services at the city level to be able to help again keep the kids out of situations that could be hampering to their future in their life. And I think this Youth Justice Action ties into that, especially if council decides to approve the resolution to become a partner of Cities United. So just wanted to kind of give you all this information that I'm going to be asking Chief and Councilman Harvey to take the lead on. Any questions, comments, concerns?
You mentioned this month, is that October or November?
I believe it is for the, Harvey, you don't know off the top of your head, do you? We'll have to look and find out. Oh, October, October. Since October is Youth Justice Action Month, so it'll be for the month of October. Yeah, which is already, yeah.
No, no, I was going to say, so it sounds like that would be a good idea for like a virtual event? Is that what, that was kind of thinking?
I think I would definitely leave this to them. They're just now getting the information they got about a couple hours ago for them to look into it and then also coordinate with the individual that submitted the request. He is affiliated with this effort and so he would probably be able to inform them on some of the things that occur to at least be able to not start from scratch. Any additional questions or concerns, comments?
I was going to say that, you know, we're looking to see, you know, we're at the 21st right now and as we get more information, have conversations to see what could be done this month. But definitely have conversations about where we're going as far as with 2021.
Right, okay, sounds good. Anything else? Okay, there being none, moving on to report B, Economic Government Report with KISA, the, what's it? The U, yup, Central Austin Youth Soccer Association. They're right down 290 East. They have what, about 200 acres of land over there? Okay, about 200 acres of land. The reason I wanted to bring this up is as, again, we're talking about going into 2021's vision of how do we start creating the facilities, the activity centers and so forth that we need in this community to make sure, one, our youth have places to go and are not, you know, destructive or whatever it may be in that sense, but also for the young adults and the teenagers, the young adults and the adults. How do we start building these things? And I talked to the president of the Youth Soccer Association. They are interested in working with the city to be able to create a multi-use sports facility. And we talked on that line of something similar that would be collaborative with the city and that entity. So there's other options for our nonprofit sports organizations and so forth. And the reason I bring this is again to say that this entity, they're interested, they are wanting to do something with that land. They are interested in being sports-centric and supportive in that they want to sit down and have conversations and see how we could potentially mutually go forward. And again, as we talk about revenues and potential economic districts and so forth like that, we at least know we have someone we can talk with to try to figure out what could potentially be done to have some type of activity center here for you and then just kind of work out the other pieces of the details. So any questions, concerns, remarks?
I'd just let some of you who weren't on council and this was decided. The wastewater treatment plant that we're building in order to accommodate Maynor Heights is going to be providing water to irrigate all 250 acres. That was the number they needed. That was the number that came out of the plant that we were born to build. And so we're getting closer and closer to that day. So the expansion of the fields is what they initially wanted. I think they could accommodate 42 soccer fields, but didn't have the water. So this may help in that effort that they'll be able to expand fields and maybe provide other types of fields for, like.
And when we definitely talked about, you know, when you're talking about multi-facility and definitely more of a conversation of what would be the best fit, but they seemed open and willing to entertain, you know, even stuff for other sports and not just soccer, like indoor, you know, basketball, football fields and stuff for the kids to be able to play there. We know most of the facilities here within the city don't have lights even for the kids to do their practices and so forth. Most of you all have come from other cities where the city usually has a sports or activity center and you usually pay some type of small fee based upon being a resident or a non-resident. So I see a great opportunity for us to be able to move forward, especially when we're talking about land ownership by the city. It's very minimal to none, a great opportunity. Any additional questions, concerns, remarks? All right, moving on to public hearings. Item one, conduct a public hearing upon a rezoning request for 24.81 acres or less out of the Summer Bacon Survey Number 62 Travis County, Texas, and being located at 9910 Hill Lane, Maynor, Texas, from light commercial to multifamily 15. I now call this public hearing open.
Mayor, I don't know if you need to elaborate at all. Basically, this property has not been developed, of course. The C1 on that narrow roadway represents problems for larger commercial development. The many fact, or the multifamily development will undoubtedly trigger some type of requirement for roadway improvements and they're necessary in the area.
Any questions, concerns, or doubts? If there are none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
If there are proper motions, do I have a second?
I second.
And second, and all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Now, conduct a public hearing upon a concept plan for Presidential Glen Commercial subdivision, three lots on 5.4 acres more or less and being located at 13600 US Highway 290 East, Maynor, Texas. I now call this public hearing open.
Mayor, council members, the concept plan is the first step in any subdivision process for the city, these lot, and the requirements for three or more lots. This is within the city limits and obviously a part of the requirement that we need to approve.
Any questions, concerns, comments from council? There being none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
If there are proper motions, do I have a second?
I second.
All right, if there are proper motions and seconded, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda. Offballing items on the consent agenda considered to be self-explanatory by council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by myself or a fellow council member, in which event the items will be removed and the consent agenda is considered separately. Item three, consideration discussion of possible action to approve the City Council minutes of the October 7, 2020 regular meeting. And item four, consideration discussion of possible action on the acceptance of the September 2020 departmental reports. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
If there are proper motions, do I have a second?
I second.
And properly seconded. Any questions to the motion?
My only question is, I was wondering, would we want to see maybe some of those additions and the reports that we talked about before?
Probably start in that. I've got a lot of people on vacation right now, so we'll be looking at them next month. And these are last month's reports, which we've had sitting for 30 days.
All right, any additional questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to the regular agenda items, consideration discussion and possible action on an engagement letter for litigation legal services. I don't know if I have all of them.
I'm going to hand this off to Paige. I'll let you take it.
Mayor, council, this item is related to the subject of our prior executive session. We are recommending the firm of Russell Rodriguez High and Bullock to represent the city in the litigation matter that was discussed. Mr. Bullock would be the attorney who would be handling the case. He is, he used to work with our office and he's since moved out and has joined another group where we maintain a good relationship and worked with him. He's worked with me in other development issue type cases and would recommend the council engagement for this.
This is executive session one or executive session two?
Executive session one.
Okay, all right. All right, any questions, concerns, or, do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve an engagement letter for litigation legal services.
If there are proper motions, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And probably seconded. Any questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Item number six, consideration discussion of possible action on the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement, Maynor Heights.
Mayor, council members, I think back a few weeks ago or a few meetings ago, we kind of outlined a narrative, some of how the development agreements were going to need to be amended. And this one here, now that we've reached sort of the stages, is going to address how things are paid for, what the phasing will be. Talks about the bond proceeds of developer funds and fiscal security. It was a normal part of the process and again, actually tightens down things that were generally stated in the previous development agreement.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement, Maynor Heights.
If there are proper motions, do I have a second?
Second.
And probably seconded. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Agenda item number seven, consideration discussion of possible action on ordinance rezoning 24.81 acres more or less out of the Summer Bacon Survey Number 62 Travis County, Texas, and being located at 9910 Hill Lane, Maynor, Texas, from light commercial to multifamily 15.
Mayor, council members, this was the work, or the first reading of the works involving the first public hearing. This went through the Planning Commission, who voted to board one to recommend approval and staff is recommending approval as well.
All right, do I have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning more or less for 24.81 acres more or less out of the Summer Bacon Survey Number 62 Travis County, Texas, and being located 9910 Hill Lane, Maynor, Texas, from light commercial to multifamily.
If there are proper motions, do I have a second? I second it. And seconded. Any questions to the motion?
Isn't this the one that's already being developed right now? Okay.
Any additional questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, none opposing, motion passes. Moving on, agenda number eight, consideration discussion of possible action upon a concept plan for Presidential Glen Commercial subdivision, the three lots on 5.4 acres more or less and behind and being located at 13600 US Highway 290 East, Maynor, Texas.
Mayor, council, this is in regard to the second public hearing. Part of the normal requirements or process for approving a concept plan, three or more lots for creating a subdivision of mine.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Make a motion, approve the concept plan for Presidential Glen Commercial subdivision, three lots on 5.4 acres more or less being located at 13600 US Highway 290 East, Maynor, Texas.
If there are proper motions, do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Agenda item number nine, consideration discussion of possible action to waive Chapter 10, Exhibit A, Article 2, Section 22D1I, to waive payment of all applicable application fees for Shadow View Commercial Section 3 preliminary plans, project number 2020P1271DPP.
Mayor, council members, this is a request from the developer to waive application fees for a final plat that has been approved previously and expired. It was extended at one point and that expired as well.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
I would like to make a motion that we Okay, I would like to make a motion that we deny the request to waive the application fee for the project at the cost, I need to say the cost, okay, the cost of um, one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars.
Is there a proper motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number ten, consideration discussion of possible action to approve the purchase contract with Chow Din and M Kim Phong for a wastewater easement with temporary construction easement.
Mayor, council members, this and I believe the next uh, agenda item has to do with easements that the city had to get in order to extend water lines for the uh, Maynor Heights uh, development. Um, some of these are temporary easements, but uh, all of this has been within the uh, number we had fixed for possible purchase of these uh, easements.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
So may I like to approve the purchase contract with, is it Chow Din?
Uh, I, Chow Din and um.
And Arm him fam?
I think it's Phong.
Phong for a wastewater easement with uh, temporary construction uh, easement.
Is there a proper motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number eleven, consideration discussion of possible action to approve the purchase contract with John Gw, Junior and Patricia A. Gw. Hopefully I said that correctly, for a special warrant to be with temporary construction easement.
Mayor, council members, this uh, is similar to the uh, action we just took. Uh, and fells within the limits of uh, money set aside for purchase of these easements.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion that city council approve the purchase contract with John, is it Gieber?
Jivauer.
Jivauer.
I'm Junior.
And Patricia Jivauer for a special warrant to be with temporary construction easement.
Is there a proper motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? All those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number twelve, consideration discussion of possible action on the appointment of a chairperson to the Public Safety Committee. Do I have a nomination?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to nominate, uh, Chief Phelps, uh, for the chairperson, uh, to the Public Safety Committee, just sort of one year term.
Do I have any other nominations? There being none. Chief, do you accept the nomination?
Uh, yes, this is for one year, right?
What do you mean though? You're following safety. Alright, um, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, you got the job. Alright, moving on to agenda item number thirteen.
Key motion, I'll second.
Okay, there probably motion and seconded. Uh, we want to vote again. All those in favor, everybody in favor. For a lifetime term, you are in chief. Agenda item number thirteen, consideration discussion of possible action on a resolution in support of the National League of Cities Innovation Ecosystem Program. Um, as you all, if you all remember, uh, I think it was the last meeting or two, the uh, downtown revitalization uh, report that I gave. Uh, basically, all we have to do is now officially say we are, uh, as a city, a part of the program. Um, and the National League of Cities, uh, this is no, this is at a no cost currently program. We project that, uh, the assistance and support is funded to include, uh, the potential pilot program when it gets launched as well. And so for those out there that are wondering, you know, or have a concern about the city joining different organizations, uh, this organization, we don't pay anything to. And they have already approved a fifteen thousand dollar grant to pay Sis Start, is who we've been working with for the past couple of months, over the next nine months, to put together and refine our challenge statement, uh, regarding what we want to try to happen with downtown through revitalization, as well as help us put together the, the uh, specifics within our RF, uh, RFQ to push out and try to select, uh, an entity that can help us in actually putting together that pilot program. They will also submit that back to the National League of Cities to try to get a grant that would cover the cost for that pilot program. So once again, uh, I think dues, based off of dues and the fifteen thousand they already gave us, we, they basically gave us fifteen years of dues we probably would have paid to them of this program. So, just kind of want to say, that's the benefit of doing partnerships. Um, so again, this resolution is for us to officially say, yes, we are, City of Maynor is a partner with the Sis Start Ecosystem Program that's under the National League of Cities. Uh, there will be joint messaging that will go out about this, but we are already underway. They have already approved some of the costs in helping us plan downtown. Uh, is there a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion on the floor that, um, council approved the resolution number twenty twenty dash twelve in support of the National League of Cities City Innovation Ecosystem Program.
Is there a proper motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded. Any questions to the motion? 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 Go ahead.
My question, um, how long is the commitment?
The commitment is, uh, the, the, the planning timeline on this is supposed to be nine months. We should hopefully have a detailed plan of what we want to try to be able to do downtown and then go to RFQs to identify, uh, who would try to be able to execute that pilot program on that plan. Uh, and then I think there, it would just be a one-year pilot program once that launches. If we wanted to maintain it or expand it, then that would come to the city to figure out how to cover that cost. Uh, go ahead, Tony.
So, um, Debbie and I and the mayor have been participating, uh, over the last maybe month or so. Uh, we've had a few, uh, Zoom meetings to try and craft this. Uh, the, the meeting that we had this week, um, they had asked about some survey questions and sending things out and I let them know that we were embarking on a comprehensive plan and that that might get most of their questions answered, uh, rather than having two surveys sent out and have somebody say, hey, I already participated. Um, what, what's this about? So, um, they're looking forward to seeing and participating in that comprehensive plan with regard to the survey questions that are, that are asked.
And I think the key piece of this is unlike developments, this we are driving. What the community wants to see, us telling them some of the difficulties, the red tape, bureaucracy that may exist, in them helping us, the city, to craft something. And then also to then help put the verbiage together to identify vetted already entities to be able to submit the RF, RFQ out and then for a committee, just like we're doing with a comprehensive plan, to be put together to then select who would do that pilot program. So this is particularly tailored for us, what we need and what we want. Currently at no cost. Alright, any additional questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. Agenda item number fourteen, consideration discussion of possible action on a resolution in support of Cities United Violent Prevention Efforts. Excuse me. Uh, this is another, uh, organization that is interested in having us partner with them. It was launched by two mayors a while back. They have over, uh, over a hundred cities involved. Most are large cities. They're, they're, they're located in Houston, but they have primarily large cities. They're interested in having us among them as not only just a smaller city, but a growing city. And I've talked to the, the executive director about our efforts to be proactive in how we support our youth, how we put programs in place. So as we grow, um, we're able to mitigate a lot of the issues that occur within larger cities or, uh, urban rural cities that are growing that are not necessarily thinking proactively. And they're fully involved and desire to be involved with us on this. Uh, they are launching a, a program, a twelve-month program in twenty twenty-one that they would like us to be involved with. Uh, and that would be us identifying who would be our liaison, uh, to Cities United. And over that twelve-month, it would be working directly with us to help put together, uh, what the city's restorative plan and support plan for youth and, and activities and so forth, uh, to mitigate, uh, what you see in larger cities of the crime rates and the, the, the issues and so forth. Um, so a great opportunity. Again, this membership is at no cost. It's, it's a no-cost membership. And again, this twelve-month program is at no cost. So again, it's partnering with organizations that are bringing us resources and services and opportunities to proactively put things in place that are at no cost to our constituents or use of tax dollars that we may have. Um, so with this, uh, again, we talked about this in our public safety meeting and felt that this would be a great, uh, a great partnership that the committee is involved with, as well as, uh, our chief and, and his team and, and potentially Councilman Harvey. Again, because this is his bread and butter. This is his area of expertise, uh, of, of taking the lead for us on this as, as we start looking more at the, the holistic wellbeing, support services that a lot of our new residents coming from elsewhere are starting to ask, uh, what other things are we providing, uh, within the city of Maynor? Uh, is there a motion? Oh, excuse me. Is there a motion on the floor?
Uh, I'll make a motion that the council adopt and approve Resolution number twenty twenty dash thirteen supporting Cities United Violent Prevention Efforts.
Is there a proper motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded. Any questions to the motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
You're gonna have to come back and, uh, form a duty anytime.
Sure.
Okay.
No problem.
This doesn't do that, that's why I reminded you.
No problem, sure. Um, any questions to the motion?
Is this the actual name of the organization?
Cities United, correct.
Okay, not the Violent Prevention.
No, city, yeah, Cities United is, is the actual name of the organization. And so, uh, mostly we all have this document, uh, and basically real quick, uh, they focus on street outreach and violence interruption. Uh, so basically peer-based type of mentorship, job training, uh, and other community support designated to help people overcome the, uh, any type of oppressive inequality that breeds violence in certain communities. Um, they, they assist with trying to come up with diversion and alternate pathways, uh, to help, uh, against formal system processing and other types of things that lead to incarceration, which result in, uh, a likelihood of future criminal behavior. Um, and then also focusing on coordinated crisis response teams. Uh, basically, uh, trying to create teams that can operate, uh, i- i- in ways to help individuals, uh, deploy a range of, of resources focused on promoting peace, celebrating life, decreasing retaliation in, um, any types of trauma and healing support.
I'm trying to find a way to help you out, so bear with me for a second. I'm reading what this says. And it talks about liaison. And the resolution itself doesn't, but the follow-up, the Partner City pledge does talk about identifying someone. And so, I'm not sure if your motion could include the liaison and saving yourself a step of having to come back.
Okay. Is that? We are getting the nod of approval. Would you like to make an amendment to your motion?
I would.
Alright.
Do I also need to put a time limit on it, or is it okay if we make, um, Harvey the forever liaison?
I would say forever.
For the year or again this week?
Okay.
Yeah, we can say it begins twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
So one year period.
Alright.
Yeah, because when we send it in, they'll, they'll end up voting on it on their side to make it official.
Okay, well then I want to, I would like to amend my, uh, motion to approve the resolution of number twenty twenty dash thirteen supporting Cities United Violent Prevention Efforts and include, uh, Councilman Harvey as our liaison starting in twenty twenty-one for a year term.
Alright, there has been a proper motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
And probably second. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your hand. None opposing, motion passes. You got to add up on chief. Moving on to item number fifteen, consideration discussion of possible action on the appointment of a city council member and or city staff member to serve as the City of Maynor Board Liaison to the Mayor Chamber of Commerce. Uh, regarding this, uh, we, we had a great conversation with the Mayor Chamber of Commerce on what we've been doing so far this year, twenty twenty, as far as putting together processes and systems just for greater communication, greater informing, uh, our partners that also have to relay information to, to their population. And then, uh, talking about the focus for twenty twenty-one, which is now going to be more focusing on, uh, uh, revenue, economic development, and how we're going to be really needing the chamber to assist us in a lot of the data gathering, uh, in informing us of what's going on within their, their group membership so we can be able to, be able to find ways to help them support the small businesses and the local businesses here within the city of Maynor, in addition to those that Debbie's going to be engaging with as well. Um, so we came up with a mutual agreement that instead of having someone have to apply for a board position in that individual, whether they happen to be nominated as a council member, or they're no longer a council member, then it kind of messes up their application cycle. Or same thing, if it is of being someone from city staff, if it needs to switch over to someone else. We wanted to have a position where it could be interchangeable of the person, based upon their experiences, based upon their area of interest to be able to help speak on behalf of council and city hall on what is going on, where we're trying to go, and where are going to be some of the tangible needs uh, from our mayor chamber to help us be able to do the economic stuff that we want to do, especially when we hopefully go forward with economic development corporation and other things, right? Um, and then to, uh, be able to help and assist the chamber in the growth areas that it wants to do as it continues to grow and be able to, to incorporate the capacities to meet the needs and asks of its membership. Any questions before I ask the nominations on, on this?
Come in.
Go ahead.
I'd like to. So, right now, we have a staff member who has submitted her ballot to, uh, her office with, with the chamber and her vast knowledge and background makes me hopeful that she'll be elected to serve on the chamber. I'm wondering if we should post. I'm wondering if we should postpone this till after that vote to know whether or not she's successful in getting. A seat and then maybe selecting a different liaison or what your thoughts are on that?
When, when, when the, uh. I know when we talked, we told, I told him I'd give him a name within thirty days. So will that still be within the thirty days or any?
Uh, for an extension from, from the chamber. I, I don't know how bound you are by the thirty days. If, if you suggested you give him. I don't know what the date of the election is. That's my issue.
I'd rather this, um. If that's what, I mean, we, we definitely want to be able to give someone. We definitely want to be able to have someone who can definitely communicate what's happening with the city, who has good experience. And can help the chamber with their needs. So I would rather just go ahead and. You know, use our spark for that person than to wait. And I, and I don't know the process of the procedures for elections. So I'd rather say that's in our person.
I think the concern was, was the person appointed by the city, whether staff or council. Going to have, uh, a right to vote in the decisions of the chamber and then they, they wouldn't unless they.
Yeah, they, they, they won't have a vote, but they will be, uh, in a sense, kind of considered like a honorary board member. Um, and that was one of the key things that, that we wanted to make sure it is that. We have someone that would be seen as part of the board and not just coming to present, uh, you know, updates. Um, because where we both need to go, we need to have that, that conduit of communication and input. Um, because we're growing and trying to figure out what we need and we're going to be identifying. Uh, the things that data-wise that we're going to need, but we also. Need to assist them in the growth that they're going to need to be able to do. And the best way to do it is to have an actual liaison.
So what you're describing is more of a council member than city staff. If you're wanting board representation. I can't believe I'm going to do this. But I've served on the board. One term, three years. Um. I know most of these folks. I have a good rapport with, with most of these folks and. If it doesn't need to be a council member and we're hopeful that Debbie gets in as, uh. Whatever, I, I would offer to act as liaison for one year. One of you would like to, to do it.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make it quick.
My motion would like to, um, is that council appoint, um, city manager. To serve as the city of Maynard board liaison to the Maynard Chamber of Commerce for one year.
I second. I second.
Is there probably motion and second?
Y'all want me?
Any question, any questions to the motion?
I would like to negotiate a second year.
Well, we can talk about that, but we're doing everything by the year these days. These are trying times.
The, the, the only thing that I would add anything to make sure, you know, uh. It is going to be key and crucial that regardless of who it is, is speaking on behalf of council. This is, this is going to be the type of role, is speaking on behalf of council. Um, and whoever ends up backfilling you, uh, the, the same message in, in the paperwork or whatever for, for, you know. When it comes back up to council is, it's got to be that specific. So that person knows the role, responsibility and the application that they have.
Right.
And how much talking they need to be doing with council.
I, the message from council needs to be clear and delivered with that clarity. Of course, they'll make their own decisions, but yes, I understand exactly what you're saying.
Got it. All right, any additional questions to the motion? There being none, all those in favor raise your hand. None opposing, you got the job. All right, we are adjourned.